Anthony Copeland staff, please take a seat. That's the audience, don't they look good in red, John? They look good, they got that Copeland red on. Let me start off by just simply saying, um, thank you for coming out, uh, this evening. Um, I'm extremely proud, I tell everybody I love every square into East Chicago. But, uh, it sometimes is like, like Dorothy would say, no place like home, no place like home. The sixth district is where I grew up as a kid. Um, I could throw a rock and hit the building that I grew up in, thirty-five twenty-nine Guthrie. Uh, some of my fondest, tell her Francis, we grew up together right on. Some of my fondest memories, some of my fondest memories. Uh, but today, I want to share with you some of the exciting things that's going on in the city of East Chicago. We have been truly, truly blessed. Uh, financially, uh, our house is in order. And, um, the next thing I pride myself on is trying to keep our city clean. Uh, sometimes it's a Herculean task, but every day, I send them out like no limit soldiers, go get it, go get it, go get it. Um, cause I tell people, when your city is clean, then the next thing you can convince people say is safe. And I can probably stand up here and say, our city is safer than it has ever been. Uh, this is six years in a row the crime has gone down in the city of East Chicago. And that's something I'm very proud of. But, uh, simply there's no iron team, so if you look to the left of me, to the right of me, this is my staff, uh, from every department, uh, in the city. Uh, anytime you have any problems, uh, we've got information up here that you can access these department heads. I hope before the day is out, you get to know them by first name basis. Uh, tonight, do we have any elected, well, I see the sixth district council, I'm standing up. I got any other elected officials in here? Okay, well, they say we're two or more is together, ain't it? He's president, alright. Um, we're gonna start off, we're gonna turn this over to Milton Reed, he's gonna be the emcee. You gonna get this started?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, so, my job this evening is gonna be to keep us moving, uh, through the program. We have a lot of information, we want to get through it quickly, we want to be respectful of everyone's time. So we just have a couple of ground rules. If you have a question, we want you to hold your question until the end. We're gonna take a few minutes at the end and do a question as the period. I'll come with the microphone and you can ask your question to the mayor director, to some of his staff. So, uh, some of your questions may get asked throughout the presentation, so just hold your questions. And if you are not comfortable asking your question, uh, in, in a public format, all of the department directors and leaders are gonna go to their individual stations afterwards. And so, hey, you can just go up to them one-on-one, exchange information, ask, make an appointment. Do not leave here with a question that has not been asked. If we don't know, we're gonna say, hey, I don't know, but I'm gonna get back to you and get this answer for you. Uh, I think everyone pretty much knows bathrooms are out this way, no smoke in the facility. So with that being said, we'll just, uh, keep us, we'll just keep everything moving.
Okay, now let me also add, I'm gonna pass this mic and if each, uh, department head say who you are and what your responsibilities is, and let's pass the mic all the way through, because I told them, I want them to know you by first name basis. You understand?
William Allen, city engineer. Uh, I basically take care of the resurfacing, road reconstructions, lighting, handicap signs, right-of-way signs, dumpster permits. Uh, and then I'll, I'll tell more with the presentation.
Good evening, Myra Acosta, I'm the director of parks and recreation. We take care of the parks, the golf course, the community centers, and the greenhouse.
Good evening, my name is John Martinez, I work for the East Chicago Sanitation District, I'm director of operations. I'm the one that makes sure the water's getting towards gotta go when you flush that toilet.
Hey, we oughta give Johnny a applause, right?
My name is John Martinez.
My name is Natalie Adams, I take care of the marina and the lakefront. Um, basically, our responsibilities are to make sure that you have beautiful views and have access to, um, our beach and our lakefront, and we have some venue spaces there. I'll tell more during the presentation, uh, but then also, uh, part of the special events team.
My name is Ben Alherit, I'm on filtration and, uh, I make sure you get, uh, clean water. And I'm responsible for maintenance and operation. And also, I work in a sanitary and pump stations as electric engineer.
Good evening, Weena Guzman, I'm the director of the water department. Um, and my responsibility is to make sure that, uh, bills go out, uh, dealing with water, um, uh, water services. So, um, again, I'll make some, a presentation as we go along.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Frank Cabrera, I'm the director of the city of East Chicago Department of Development. I have so many different hats. Uh, I am the individual who gives homeowner incentive programs. We take exterior renovation, facade programs throughout the whole city. And we do CDBG home-funded programs, and we're also currently working on the Markston Renaissance Plan. I also am involved in the youth programs, providing dollars for, uh, summer jobs, things of that nature. So my title goes, as I said, a lot of different hats.
We're just giving the names now, so we'll get through all of this more in more detail.
Uh, good afternoon, my name's Keith Selmia, and I have the awesome task of, uh, being the director of Public Works. My responsibility is a huge one, it is to keep our city clean.
James Fattalatine, building commissioner for the city of East Chicago. Uh, we have two divisions, our building permit division for new building, uh, and also our code enforcement division. So we work hand-in-hand in keeping the, uh, the city of East Chicago clean. If you have any complaints, I'm the person you wanna talk to. And many, uh, many times as far as weeds, garbage, litter, things going on within the city, just come and speak to me and I'll be more than happy to, uh, help you.
Kevin Klosek, director of information technology. Uh, I'm in charge of our information technology systems through the city. And, uh, a little later on in the program, we'll be talking to you about a couple of the projects that we've completed.
My name is Jesus. Unbeknownst to me, my-
Hallelujah.
Testing, testing. I promise I can't walk on water. Um, no. So, my name is Marino Solorio, I'm the planning and economic development director here for the city of East Chicago. Well, my job ta- task is, is planning for the city and economic development.
Good afternoon, my name is Frank Smith, chief of police. It's a beautiful thing to see all of you people take time out of your day and come in here. We have to say, it's truly a blessing, I just wanna say thank you.
Good evening, my name's Anthony Serna, fire chief. Along with, uh, chief Smith and the mayor, we're part of that keeping East Chicago safe as just, and our magnets on our tables here.
Good evening, my, good, I can't even talk. Good evening, everyone, my name is Arnita Folks, and I'm the director of the East Chicago Health Department, where we specialize in public health and six other divisions, and I'll talk about that later.
Hello, everyone, I'm chief of staff, Sandra Favella. I work with this wonderful mayor, Mayor Copeland, on a daily basis, uh, in his office, and this wonderful team behind me. Um, basically, my responsibilities is to make sure that everyone here, the department heads are doing what they're supposed to. So if you have any complaints throughout the city, I try to help relieve that from the mayor. So you can feel free to give me a call and, uh, we'll make sure one of our department heads takes care of that, okay?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Tia Colley, the executive director for East Chicago Housing Authority, thank you.
And everybody, these guys don't get a lot of credit, but let's give a hand for the multimedia guys, just raise your hand. They're with us all the time, and they, they capture the essence of what we try to do. So, okay, like I said, moving us right along, our first section that we're gonna be dealing with tonight is concerned with, um, uh, public safety and public health. And so these departments are near and dear to everyone, so we're gonna just bring up our fire chief, chief Serna. Let's give him a hand, Anthony Serna.
Thank you, Milton. Good evening, everybody, how are you? It's my pleasure to be here, and I just wanna take you back, let's take a brief look back in time so we can sharpen our focus on the present, okay? East Chicago was incorporated as a city in eighteen ninety-three. And by the way, we're celebrating our one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth year anniversary this year. One of the first orders of business carried out by our founding fathers was the formation of a volunteer fire department. A number of years later, the merging of the volunteer brigades from the Indiana Harbor and East Chicago sides of the city established a new paid professional fire department. And since nineteen oh-six, the East Chicago Fire Department continues to stand by the motto that's emblazoned on our shoulder patches, which is to save lives and protect property. Now let's fast forward to the twenty-first century. Since two thousand and ten, with Mayor Anthony Copeland as the financial guardian of the city of East Chicago, the fire department has totally replaced its entire collection of aging firefighting apparatus with Northwest Indiana's most modern frontline fleet of attack pumppers, aerial platform, and heavy-duty rescue. And here's how we did it. In twenty-fourteen, the fire department purchased a new attack pumper. In twenty-fifteen, we purchased another new attack pumper. And in twenty-sixteen, we purchased two new attack pumppers. Twenty-seventeen, we purchased a brand-new one-hundred-foot aerial platform. And additionally, we're set to take delivery in just a couple of weeks, a half-million-dollar heavy-duty rescue vehicle. That's a total investment of over three-and-a-half million dollars in over, in just five years alone. The East Chicago Fire Department, we're here to keep you safe, not only with leading-edge equipment, but also with an allocated fire force of seventy-six highly-trained firefighters. We currently have fourteen recruits that we just hired that are in the academy. Our firefighters possess certifications with both the State of Indiana Department of Homeland Security and the Board of Firefighting Personnel. We also have firefighters who are specialists in officer strategy and tactics, driver operator pumper aerial, technical rescue awareness and operations, and hazmat awareness and operations, just to name a few. The East Chicago Fire Department firefighters are also trained to deliver basic life support, non-transport care to our citizens. At the insistence of Mayor Anthony Copeland, every sworn firefighter since twenty-fourteen must become a State of Indiana certified emergency medical technician within their first year of service and maintain that certification throughout their career. Bringing together the East Chicago Fire Department's commitment of firefighter EMTs with our BLS non-transport level of care, across four fire engines, a heavy-duty rescue, and our new nine-one-one ambulance service provider, which is Superior Ambulance, they're contracted with the city to provide three ambulances housed in East Chicago. This all results in residents, you and I, receiving the greatest amount of emergency medical services care possible that we have ever received, every single day. Another way the East Chicago Fire Department keeps the city safe is through outreach and public education. As you can see by some of the pictures that I have on the board there, we are committed to educating our community on fire prevention and life safety. Under direction of Chief Inspector Henry Ventura, we visit East Chicago schools and host an annual fire department open house, where thousands of residents have attended over the years to learn about fire safety and receive information and services from different public safety agencies. Picture there is ATF agent Jeffrey Marshall and his canine partner Zelda from last year's twenty-seventeen open house. Also, our very own health department has participated every year in our open house. The health department even just this past year offered free flu shots and blood pressure checks. Finally, the East Chicago Fire Department keeps the city safe with services we provide beyond nine-one-one fire response. In partnership with the Red Cross, we are pleased to announce the Home Fire Campaign for East Chicago. The Home Fire Campaign helps save lives by installing free smoke alarms in homes that don't have them, and by educating people about fire safety. This is a great opportunity to increase the safety of citizens of East Chicago and is available to all residents. See me at my table after, uh, we all speak, and you can sign up and find out more information for your free smoke alarm install. For the past one-hundred-and-twelve years, the East Chicago Fire Department has served its citizens with honor and pride. Every day, both line and staff firefighters stand by our motto, which is to save lives and protect property. And under the direction of Mayor Anthony Copeland and the efforts of the dedicated professionals of the East Chicago Fire Department, we're keeping East Chicago safe for today and for the future. If you have any questions, please see me at my table, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, chief. Another department that I think, uh, everyone, I really want you to tune in to what's going on in this department. Let's give a round of applause for our police chief, Frank Smith.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I'd like everybody to take, hold your attention for a minute, and I'd like to have everybody take a look at that board. And the reason I have everybody look at that board is because there's some pretty drastic numbers up there that paint a very significant picture in the city of East Chicago. If you look at that board and you tune in, you will see that crime has been driven down for the last six years in a row. I don't know of any other city that can brag about that. That is a tremendous accomplishment within the city of East Chicago. Now let me tell you what we're doing to get there. One of the things that we're doing is being more proactive, and what that means is we're not waiting for, for a call to come in. What we're doing is we're putting people in areas where things are occurring at, and we're making progress. We're seeing dividends, basically. One of the biggest things we've done is we had an added analyst, which actually goes out, looks at all the crime data, looks in the areas where we're having problems, and we put officers in those areas where we have concerns, okay? We know people are concerned about things that are happening in the city, but we're doing a better job than what we did in the past, and those numbers on that board reflect that, okay? And we want everybody to know that, okay? One of our investments that we make is technology. Um, the mayor is committed to putting a number of new, uh, equipments within the police department, okay? One of those things is like the ShotSpotter system. If a gunfire goes off, there was a time that we had to try and locate that, find out where that bullet came from, whatever. We no longer have to do that. That when that gunfire goes off, it tells us the street, the area, and it gives us a radius of where that end, I mean, where that shot may have been fired. So now we do a better job of tracking things within the city of East Chicago, which continues to drive down your numbers. Another thing that we have is called an LPR or a license plate reader. We would have to develop probable cause if we saw somebody maybe in a stolen vehicle or whatever. The license plate reader scans every vehicle that drives by that truck. So if you're in a vehicle, and if you're, say you've got expired plates or stolen vehicle, it's gonna kick it out. No problem whatsoever, it's helping us catch criminals left and right. All of these types of tools are making the difference in, in technology. One of the biggest things I've asked all the residents in, that if you see something, say something. Be a part of this community, so we don't have tragic events that happen out in the park and nooners, which I'm very proud of my officers, because it's solved, okay? That individual is behind bars where he belongs, and sorry, if you don't feel that way, too bad. It's, people are sick of it, and I'm sick of it. So I am committed, okay, to continue to make this city the safest city as we possibly can. We're in the process of hiring seven new additional officers, and as of Monday morning, we will be accepting applications for new officers. So if you know someone twenty-one years of age or older that lives in the city of East Chicago, we welcome them to come and apply. We want people from our community to police our community, folks. We have partners with the schools, because everybody's concerned with active shooters, okay? We're having our training at the end of this month, but another thing we wanna step beyond, our officers are gonna be given fabs, meaning that if we have a situation, we can actually swipe and get into their school without waiting for somebody to open the door. These are just small things that we're doing to help make your, your city safe, okay? One of the things that paying dividends, that I don't wanna touch too much on, we are probably one of the few cities that technology-wise, we have cameras and the mayor's, uh, installing more. It's amazing how many crimes these cameras within this community has solved. They are paying dividends every day, and it's making your community safe. Last but not least, I just wanna touch base on, tell everybody, we have a couple of events coming up. One is the, um, night, uh, National Nights Out, which is held in August. You can bring your kids out, um, it's a great way to interact with the police department, get to know us. We'd like to get know, to get to know you. The other one is a day with our youth, which is coming up July fourteenth. We'll be more than happy to sit down, talk with you. If you have any questions, concerns, or anything, we'd be more than happy to say, hey, come on, spend the day with the police and law enforcement officers of East Chicago. We have a very good police department, we have a very good city, folks. And, and just let me say this, if you look at this city as a whole, corruption, gone. Crime, down. City, clean. That's a major accomplishment, and we should all be proud who live and dwell within the city of East Chicago. I'll be at the booth over there, if you have any questions for me in the future, I'll be more than glad to answer them and stand by, address your concerns at the end of the day, alright, folks? God bless.
You know, I'd just like to, as I was speaking before about our firefighters and, and the level of EMT, uh, care that we give, I forgot to mention, uh, with us here tonight from Superior Ambulance is Ken Sink. Ken Sink, would you stand, please? Vice President of Operations, and the reason I'm asking him to stand, the opportunity that we have with Superior Ambulance being our new nine-one-one provider is jobs, okay? Jobs. We were just speaking a little bit earlier, and he's available to talk afterwards. There's five openings right now for medicare drivers. What do you need to be a medicare driver, a driver's license and a clean record? I mean, we're trying to do what we can, not only through the mayor offering certain, uh, incentives for firefighters and policemen on their entry-level test, but we're trying with the companies that we deal with to offer jobs to the city of East Chicago. So it's not just about, uh, the safety, we're proud of that, but we wanna provide jobs too. So please, speak with Ken Sink and I afterwards about the job opportunities available with Superior Ambulance.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, announcement, and also to the chief. I think, um, again, we're gonna hear a little bit more about that camera program, but when, when Mayor Copeland tapped IT department and a couple of us to put that together, he really had the security and safety of the city in mind. And you just don't see that in cities of our size, urban communities, you just do not see that. So I just applaud your vision for that, Mayor Copeland. I know he hates saying something, I'll call him too much. Okay, moving us right along. This is for, this is, will be coming up is our health department. And with our health department, I want everyone to learn and understand, we offer so many services that you can be taking advantage of, or you can tell somebody about, that just simply are not offered in other cities. It's in our city, so please, let's give a round of applause for Arnita Folks, as she comes tells us about some of these programs.
Alright, thank you, Milton, for that. Hello, everyone, how are you guys doing? Beautiful crowd, I love this. Well, I wanted to let you guys know that our health department is located at one-hundred West Chicago Avenue in the Healthy East Chicago Building. If you guys don't know that, that's next, across the canal from the water department. Uh, Dr. Jerry Browning is our health officer. Right. Demands. East Chicago is one of only two cities statewide that continues to operate and manage a local health department for its residents. Mayor Copeland and the health department is dedicated to public health and making sure our citizens is educated about their health. The health department is made up of six divisions, which allows us to offer a wide variety of services for our residents, and I'll explain each one. I'm gonna start off with animal control first. Animal control is a no-kill facility. It specializes in domestic stray control, no wildlife, which is coyotes, chickens, that type of thing, we don't do those. Uh, registration, uh, registration enforcement. Vector control, which are, is our mosquito spraying, which that's gonna begin June first, well, after June first, pending the weather, if it permits. Removal of deceased roadkill, which is the dead animals you see on the streets and other areas that may be out, uh, hit by cars or whatever. Um, trapping of raccoons and squirrels, that's for a fee, you would see city hall for that. Um, we are the only health department in the northwest central Indiana that operates an animal control. Secondly, emergency preparedness. We provide disaster readiness for our residents. Residents can volunteer for drills and other activities to promote readiness if there's ever a natural disaster threatening our community. Thirdly, vital records, which handles all of East Chicago birth and death records. We also offer paternity affidavits and amendments by appointments. Uh, fourth, our immunization department offers childhood immunizations from ages two months to eighteen years of age. We also do international travel vaccines. And to let you guys know too, if you have anybody that's school age, uh, your children, uh, grandchildren, please let them know we are having a free immunization and physical June ninth, nine AM to one-thirty PM. So please come on out, get the word out. Fifth, one of our bigger divisions, which is our inspection divisions. It handles food retail and environmental inspections. That includes all food establishments, temporary food vendors, hotels, gas stations, also lakefront, beaches, and housing standard and nuisance complaints. East Chicago is the only city in Northwest Indiana that has a, a FDA food standardized inspection officer, which that means that we are inspecting at a higher standard than any other health department in the county. Nursing division, which is our last division, but also a big division that also works with inspections for any outbreaks or anything, handles all infectious and communicable disease reporting that we send to state. TB testing, STD and HIV testing, free blood pressure checks, so you guys can stop by. Fleet, I'm sorry, free flu vaccination also for you guys. Um, health education and free blood lead testing for our East Chicago residents. The nursing division has tested a total of two-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-nine people. That includes a number of adults and children. And out of that number, only thirty-nine children tested elevated with a five or higher. If you or your children, grandchildren have not been tested, you are free to stop by the health department to get tested. If you have any further questions or anything you wanna know about our other services, please feel free to stop by our table. I have our public health nurse in the back, Suli. She's here to answer any questions, you can stop at our table, thank you very much.
Okay, so now we're moving from our public, uh, safety and public health section to now we're to our quality of life, uh, more or less. And so we're gonna just keep moving with our Parks and Recreation Director, Myra Acosta. Let's give her a hand.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Myra Acosta, and I have the pleasure of serving you as the Park and Recreation Director. My department handles four different areas. We handle the parks, the community centers, the greenhouse, and the golf course. Today, I will be sharing our information regarding these facilities and the various programs we provide. Um, five million dollars have been invested in the parks over the past five years. Our parks are now all handicap accessible. They have received new playground equipment, new benches, new shelters, walking trails, and some of the larger parks even have exercise equipment. This summer, all of our parks will have free Wi-Fi. And also coming this summer, our two brand-new community centers. Um, our brand-new community centers are a total of eight million-dollar investment. Both centers will have a fitness room, an indoor walking track, a full-size basketball court, and they will offer programming for all the residents. This year, we will also be investing a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars to paint and make minor repairs to our existing community centers. Our existing community centers offer after-school and summer programming for kids ages five to eighteen. And this year, they're also offering free senior programming. So, um, all these services are completely free to all East Chicago residents. So make sure that you, um, sign up for a summer program, if you know the Children's Five to Eighteen, it's completely free program. Another facility is our greenhouse, which is located in Washington Park. This facility is open daily, and it's a great place to come, relax, and enjoy the beauty of nature. Aside from being a beautiful facility, it's also a fully functioning greenhouse, which means we grow our own vegetables and also our own flowers. So the vegetables are a hundred percent organic, and they're free to East Chicago residents. Um, we are also happy to announce that this year, we'll be offering cooking classes at the greenhouse. So starting June sixth, if you're interested, make sure you sign up for the cooking classes. Um, the golf course is another beautiful facility that the city has available. Um, there's miniature golf and batting cages, um, and there's a small fee for those. On June twenty, twenty-second, we'll be having a beer and wine event with live music, entertainment, food. So make sure to come out and join us. Um, other events that are coming this summer are various senior trips. We have yoga at the lakefront, we have dancing at the parks. And, um, if you have any questions, suggestions, comments, please see me at my table, thank you.
I just wanna add one more thing, that Myra, uh, Carnegie Hall is also doing great things for the senior citizens. So if you have time, um, visit the Carnegie Hall, they have things for, uh, sewing, uh, and different other classes. So if you're all interested, Carnegie Hall has, uh, special things for all of you.
Okay, next, we're going to have Natalie Adams to tell you about the great things going on at the East Chicago Marina. Let's give her a hand. Let's give her a hand.
Let that be the last time you stumble over my name. I'm not quite sure what the problem is, but... Good evening, again, my name is Natalie Adams. I have the privilege and the pleasure to work in an environment with a fabulous view of Lake Michigan. Under the direction of Mayor Anthony Copeland, it is his goal that the citizens of East Chicago have a welcoming environment to also enjoy the tranquility of the water. At the marina, we have new state-of-the-art boat slips. The seasonal rental includes bathhouses with showers, laundry facilities, social and grilling areas, cable TV and Wi-Fi. For the novice or skilled fishermen, we have a great fishing pier and convenient fish cleaning station. We have two quaint banquet venue rentals with great views of the lake that seat 100 to 140 guests. You can hire your own caterer or bring your own prepared food. We have outdoor seating in those venue rentals as well, again, free Wi-Fi. We are in conversations to get the Marina Bar and Grill Restaurant opened back up this year, hopefully as soon as July. We are also in conversations to have water rental activities like paddle boating and kayaking enjoyed at the marina. And I believe some of that is going to be offered through Myra, through the Park Department, freed or at a discounted rate to seniors, for any of you that are really active seniors. At George Park Beach, we pride ourselves in keeping your beach clean. We have systems in place to limit the bird population on the beach during the summer. This effort has greatly reduced bacteria that birds bring to all beaches. There are designated propane grilling areas, public restrooms, phenomenal playground equipment, shelters that are available for rent, and a free splash pad for kids to enjoy. For more details, please log into www.joarsebeach.com. We have ramps that make the beach accessible to handicapped as well, and we're looking to add additional access to allow the disabled to actually get out onto the sand. The beach is open Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend. If you have not been to the lakefront, to the beach, to the marina in the last couple of years, please venture out that way. It is a beautiful sight to see. The mayor has invested a lot of time and money to make it more accessible to all of you. We have a couple, I'm also a part of the Special Events Team, and I have the pleasure to serve with a committee of other department heads on that team as well. With the mayor's support and commitment, we try to bring you great events throughout the year. I see faces that I've seen at several of our special events. We have a couple of them coming up soon, and I think there's some flyers available to make sure that you don't miss out on any of those. So whether it's the marina, the beach, or all the special events, please come out and enjoy your city. Everything that we do is for you. If you have any questions or are looking for a place to have an event, please come and see me. Thank you.
Thank you Natalie Adams, N-A-T-A-L-I-E. Lunch is on me tomorrow, okay Natalie, I apologize. And the reason why I stumbled a little bit is because I'm not really on here, but I do have certain things that I want to tell you about, and I was just thinking about what I was going to say, but I want everybody to see, if everyone here is, in this district, the Fitzsimmons Building that has been pretty much an eyesore for a while, and, and so, we are, through the mayor's vision, we are totally redoing the Fitzsimmons Building and the building next to it. That's a $4 million project. The demolition started today on that project, and right on Main Street and 138, it's going to have retail on the bottom, residential on the top. It is beautiful. It will be a very, very beautiful building. That's just the rendering. The rendering is going to do no justice to what you'll actually see out at that building. Right across, you all know we did Unity Plaza, so I just wanted to point that out, is that it's not specifically on here, but it's one of the projects in the city that we are really looking forward to this district. And then this district has been a beneficiary and actually caused some jealousy of the other districts because of the RDA grant. And a lot of the dollars related to the grant had to be spent from Columbus Drive north all the way up, so that's how we were able to get so many improvements on this side of town. The Broadway Retail, beautiful, it's clean, the alleys are clean, the cameras, tenants, you know, foot traffic, everything is going to come back right here to the North Harbor section in this district. So just stay tuned, and you'll watch little by little as the streets light up and the people start coming back as a walking community. This is going to be thriving like it was many years ago, so we look forward to that. So you can give that a hand too. Okay, and now we will have Tia Carley from our East Chicago Housing Authority. She's the executive director there, so let's give her a hand as she comes.
Good evening, everyone. I didn't do a speech, I didn't tell anybody what I do all day. It goes from day to day. First of all, I'd like to recognize my staff, who I couldn't do it without. Cynthia Smith, who was the Housing Manager. Brad Warman, who was my foreman over a lot of sites. Ernie Sigmar, who was the Community Service Director. I would like to thank each and every one of you. This is one of the biggest crowds that they've had since they've started going out every month as far as visiting the districts. So, and I didn't think that I would have as many people come down, but it looked like we had quite a few residents and the people in the community, so that's a blessing. And I'd really like to thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedule and being a part of this, because without you, we wouldn't be able to do this. Mayor Anthony Copeland has given me the honor to be the Executive Director for East Chicago Housing Authority for the last five years. I've been with Housing Authority for over 25 years, almost going on 30. Got a few more years to go, but we got a lot to do during that time, trying to get everything done. You'll see right here where we have a new plan that'll start in the month of July, a new senior site. That will be the replacement for the Nikosia Building, and it's for 208 residents. Right now, we have about 142 residents at the Nikosia Building. Once we transfer those residents, those that are interested, they'll do a waiting list and you'll be able to apply. But remember, those have utilities versus the one you're in. Everything that's green doesn't look green, you know, some of them go to other places and then they come back here. So you need to realize what we're about to do as far as the Hunter Building. We're in the process of renovating and changing some things, light fixtures, painting, getting other things done for you to beautify the building. We tried to replace this building a couple of years back, and it didn't go through, so we know that there's improvements that has to be done. Prior to, when I came to you a couple of months ago before the Town Hall meeting, I explained to you all to be patient with the East Chicago Housing Authority. We were in the process of getting rid of West Calumet. As you can see, West Calumet is a third down, so by August, it'll be totally down. Then we'll start working on the Nikosia Building. The councilperson here, who happens to be my sister, which is the 6th District Council person, she's striving, she's fighting, she's pushing, she wants things to happen for the residents in the 6th District. I understand that we have other councilpeople that fight for their district, but my sister, she stays in my ear every day about, if she sees something, she wants me to correct it and fix it, just like the mayor, believe me, they call quite often. We have a couple of sites. Yeah. We have a couple of sites. Mostly our properties are in the 3rd District and the 6th District. The 6th District right here, what East Chicago Housing Authority happens to be over is the Section 8 Department, which has gotten larger. We have over 1,000 vouchers, and we're actually putting in a grant right now for another 150 vouchers that is to help homeless people, so they don't have to move into public housing. We will hear about that by the end of the year if we're successful enough to get that grant. Housing Authority in the last two months signed an agreement with the state as well as Hammond Housing, where the residents could move to those areas as well, because we know that right now, we're landlocked and we only have so many properties. And also, we're working with the mayor of East Chicago as well as Frank Mervan. We just worked on a house that is for veterans. It's called, I don't know, Veterans Something, but we should cut the ribbon in about two weeks. That property is on Narva Street. When the mayor heard that the veterans wanted something, he was getting concerns about how come he wasn't looking out for the veterans. The mayor said to you, get a project done, let's go ahead and work on it. What we did was, we had the property, we turned it around, and with the help of North Township, Frank Mervan, he brought in volunteers to renovate it. They went to local agencies like Home Depot, Menards, and other entities to go ahead and help get the house totally done. So that's a blessing to the residents of East Chicago, and if you know someone that is a veteran, that house will be available within the next two weeks. Also, we have seven units that was just actually turned over to the East Chicago Housing Authority. That was the replacement of where the old filtration plant was, where some of our properties had been torn down. Now we have seven brand-new constructed units that are actually beautiful. We should have the ribbon cutting probably the Thursday of next week or possibly Friday. We'll make sure that there's a flyer put up, so if you all are able to walk across the street, or if you want to come over, you're more than welcome to see what those, and those are family units. I want to tell you all that the East Chicago Housing Authority, with all the events that are coming up and planned on going on throughout the city, a great problem for the residents, whether it be Nikosia or Hunter, is transportation. What East Chicago Housing Authority is willing to do is if you have more than 10 people, when we have these different events, we'll go ahead and we'll pay someone overtime to transport you all, and the vehicle is handicap accessible. So we'll make sure if you're interested in going to those places, getting there, we will help you get there, but you have to have at least 10 people. It doesn't make sense for us to go and take one person, and you have to be a Housing Authority resident. So keep that in mind. Ms. Smith will make sure that her staff puts the flyer out and will do signatures, and once we get so many, we're only going to do one trip now, so if you all have been driving in your cars, keep going, but if you don't have a vehicle, we'll try to help you. And I know I'm going to hear from the mayor, he said, "Why'd you say that to me so long?" But you know, it is what it is, because I know my residents. Actually, like I said, I don't have a whole lot to say, I just wanted to tell you all thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for being patient with the East Chicago Housing Authority. I promised you certain things, and I plan on delivering, and I'm not done yet. So look forward to working with you all the rest of the year and the East Chicago Housing Authority staff. Have a great day. If you have any questions, I'll be in the back of the room at the end of the day. Thank you.
Let me also add, Tia's being modest, when we first started off, we set our sights on improving housing. We think that's the greatest gift that you can give, the comfort of having a house, but they say a house is not a home unless someone's living there. But there's two areas that I'm proud of, that I've worked with here. When we did Lakeside, they came in, they said it was going to do $18 million of improvement. When we got through, they ended up putting $32 million into Lakeside. Same thing with Nikosia. When we promised the people that we were going to give them quality housing when we went to replace Nikosia, I'm proud that those 208 units Tia is talking about will be a $38 million project. So again, I want to thank Tia for all the hard work that she does when she's representing you. Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're moving to a section, and if some of this in our, for our Department of Redevelopment, if it doesn't necessarily fit you, please still listen very closely, because you may have a cousin, a nephew, a grandchild, or someone that is, that lives in the city of East Chicago that you say, "Hey, you know what, I was at the Town Hall today, and you need to call this department and check on this program." So this is a program that can touch, if it doesn't touch everyone in this room, certainly someone you know or care about needs to personally benefit from these programs. So please pay close attention to our Executive Director of the Department of Redevelopment, Frank Rivera. Let's give him a hand.
Good evening, everyone. We get to this point about now that we start kind of sort of slugging in our chairs, getting a little tired. I'm hoping to bring some enlightenment to you, especially when you look at these brochures. These brochures bring in the whole idea of money, and I know how we all feel about money, right? Okay, so some of the positive things that we're looking at are four particular areas, and one of them right now is the homeowner incentive program. This is the city of East Chicago offering down payment assistance, especially for those who are interested in buying and purchasing an existing or a reconstructed home. We give you $10,000. If you're a city employee, we give you another $5,000 as an incentive. We're talking $15,000. And this will be your primary residence for at least five years. Now, if you're interested in buying a new home, now we're talking a whole lot more money. We're talking about $25,000 with an additional incentive for those who are city employees, another $5,000. That's $30,000. And with everything that you've been hearing, money, 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 right? Okay, so then you have to live in that as a primary residence for 10 years. Now, the key to this is that we require you to take a class, at least one class, for eight hours, from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. Okay? And the nice thing about the class, it teaches you everything that you need to know about purchasing a home. And it's on a Saturday from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. And if you need any further information, just call 219, it's in the pamphlet, 391-8513. Either ask for myself, ask for Loretta Parker, who's in the back there, she handles our incentive program, and we'll be at the table to answer any questions that you have concerning that. Now, as part of the requirement, in terms of receiving these dollars, you have to give us proof that you live in this residence every year. And the purpose for that is, we don't do rentals. You can't buy this home and do rentals, because if you do rentals, then I'm going to get my money back. Okay? All right. So the other thing too is about being eligible as a city employee, you must be an employee for at least a full year, one full year, in order to receive that $5,000 incentive. Now, I like numbers, and if you look at your pamphlets, the numbers here, in terms of participants who have received these dollars, have been 219 individuals from 2012 to 2017. I look at that a little differently, just besides that, is that they're tax-paying people, families who are now investing their time, investing their dollars with us here in the city. Now that generates more revenue, money, money, money. Okay, then the other thing too about this is that we've expended from 2012 to 2017, $2.398, $892, that's $2,398,000. It's a lot of money. I've been trying to convince the mayor, give me a million dollars every year so that I can make sure we get more than just the $3 million. And the mayor, he's like, "Okay, okay, we'll do that, time will tell." Okay, but anyways. The Citywide Exterior Renovation Program, this is a very, very, very exciting program. It's across the city. And what it does, it impacts and stimulates your community. As a matter of fact, in the 6th District, we're in there right now. And when you look at this, you're increasing your overall real estate, because the homes that they're selling for more than what you think they're selling for. As a matter of fact, across the city, we got some homes selling in some parts of the city at about $150,000 to $175,000. Now, think about that for a minute, okay? Improving the quality of life and housing stock, making the neighborhood attractive and new, promoting homeownership, as the mayor was saying earlier, generate neighborhood participation to ensure benefits and economic activity for long-term community investment and development, target and prioritize those homes that show signs of needing exterior repairs. And we provide $40,000 for that exterior renovation to happen. Now, the key for me, you can have all these numbers and have all these nice little bullets and everything, is when a community member pulls you to the side and says, "Frank, I love coming home. I'm having people stopping at my house, pointing at my house, looking at how beautiful my house looks." That's when you know you're making a big impact, when people do that. And that's not just one, it's been a couple that have come to me. As a matter of fact, in the brochure, that was one of the people in here that told me, "My house is beautiful." Okay? So that's a good part of that. Now, turning over to CDVG and Home Funds, we're talking about a program that funds at least three tiers. And we're looking at Tier One for low income, and currently offers $7,500 grant with 3% low interest. Where are you going to find 3% low interest? Here in the city of East Chicago, that's where you're going to find it at. And the grant does not exceed anything over $33,500. As for Tier Two, looking at very low income, currently offers about $10,000, and that grant is, again, 3% low interest, and that cannot exceed $33,500. Tier Three is extremely low income, and offers $15,000 grant with 3% low interest. low interest loan above the grant, and not to exceed thirty-three thousand five hundred. Now, other available programs, grant programs, we offer fifteen thousand dollar grants at three percent low interest and not to exceed twenty-five thousand. Emergency programs, offers five thousand dollar grant with three percent low interest loan, not to exceed twenty thousand. And as I was saying when I first started talking, money, 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 that's what we offer. We want our citizens to be feeling the whole outcome of what we're trying to do here in the city of East Chicago, and that's to have a better quality of life. And now we'll turn over to the Mark-Town Renaissance Plan. We are working very diligently in making this happen, as well as, and we're taking the same approach as to our facade program, so that way they can have a good quality of life and have nice improved homes. And basically, that's all I have to, no, not really. There's other things that I can do, because I got Pete Shelby with one of my book lists over here, if you can raise it up. That's more than what I do, but I want to make sure we just do a quick bullet, because that's a lot of different programs, like the youth programs, funding for the summer, I'm talking about Pop Warner, everybody knows Pop Warner. There's all kinds of different things that we do here in the city of East Chicago. We're here to serve you, and our mayor is here to serve you.
Thank you, Frank. And as mentioned earlier, I know a few of you came in late, we, everyone's not going to get a chance to speak tonight, but you know, the people that didn't speak, they introduced themselves, they still will be around for you to ask a question, one of the bigger departments, Public Works for sure, and the Building Department, Sanitary District. So if you have a question related to any of that, do not leave here with your question unanswered. So the next thing is, this department, at some point in time, we either walk, drive, or roll over one of his projects, I'm sure, because he handles all of the streets. So let's give a round of applause to our city engineer, Will Allen.
Thank you, Milton. Like Milton said, my name is William Allen, City Engineer, or Director of the Engineering Department. Basically, what the Engineering Department does is manage major construction projects, starting from design to construction. This past last year, eleven million dollars was spent on a construction project through the Engineering Department. Examples of this is the forty-eight-hundred and forty-nine-hundred block of Weg, the fifty-one-hundred block of Reading. These streets were reconstructed, costing approximately two million dollars. Another example is they all just rounded about near the Marina. A portion of that construction cost was given to us by the state, totaling around three million dollars. And a project that's currently going on right now is one-hundred-and-forty-ninth, being reconstructed from Railroad to White Oak, costing approximately four million dollars. So a major project in this area that's going to be occurring this year is Guthrie, along with opportunities for new housing. The Community Center also being constructed at Broadway and Guthrie, it's also going to be reconstructed. A lot of the utilities underground need replacing, and along with that, everything on the surface will also be replaced. So this is the sanitation, the storm sewer, the water main, the sidewalks, the curbs, new asphalt, landscaping, plantings, sod, all of that will be replaced, as well as lighting. One concern or phone calls that Engineering Department were getting last year, when NIPSCO switched out their fixtures to LED, there was a need for additional lighting throughout the neighborhoods, throughout the streets. These new decorative poles that will be installed will have two fixtures, one light going over the street to illuminate the roadway, and then also another ornamental fixture on the pole to illuminate the sidewalk. Another major, other major projects that are happening throughout East Chicago was Indianapolis Boulevard, another state road where we'll be basically replacing and relining the sewer as needed, replacing the existing six- and eight-inch water main to a twelve-inch. This is basically to ensure that the fire department, the residents, the public can have the adequate water pressure. There'll also be new sidewalks, curb, accommodation for bikes, and then also, like on Guthrie, the new lighting. Columbus Drive will also have some improvements, at every intersection will be enhanced, there'll be bump outs, which basically allow a pedestrian to look down the street without actually being in the street to see incoming traffic. These intersections will also be enhanced aesthetically with landscaping and decorative pavers, all the sidewalk will be replaced, and then all the pavement replaced, along with the intersection improvement, I'm sorry, this will be for the stretch of Euclid to Klein. Also on Columbus Drive is a pedestrian bridge replacement at Alder. The existing bridge, which is, you know, beyond its repair, will be replaced. The new bridge will still cross at Alder, but instead of coming down at the advanced store, it will be on the opposite side of Alder, on the west side. This will be a signature bridge, cost is estimated to be two-point-four million dollars, and this will be a major gateway, you know, to East Chicago, coming down Columbus Drive. Along with construction projects, along with resurfacing and lighting, we also handle a number of right-of-way applications, such as handicap, heavy load for trucks going throughout the city. We basically give them the okay of which routes to take, dumpster applications if you need to take up any right-of-way, for example, removal of debris, if you're doing garage work or house improvements, and then also driveway applications, if you would like to make a curb cut, to allow vehicles to come up to a driveway for a residential property. Any questions, concerns, suggestions, you can, you know, feel free to contact me, find me after the meeting, I'll be more than happy to talk to you. Thank you.
Also, Will, I think is, one thing he failed to mention is Guthrie, all the way from Speedway all the way till you get to Michigan Avenue, is getting ready to get full reconstruction. It's a nine-million-dollar project, and we'll be breaking ground in about a month and a half. Now, I'm telling you, you're going to see signs all in here saying, "Pardon our dust," but when we get through, I guarantee you, you're going to see a fine roadway that your children's children will be able to enjoy.
And I'll add to that also, is that we are in design plans for redoing all of Michigan Avenue, so in the...
We're going to steal your thunder, you don't want to tell it.
Yeah, Michigan Avenue, basically from Klein all the way to Kennedy, is currently under design to be reconstructed, so the sidewalk, the asphalt, some of the intersections will also be improved, so, and that's... Right now, it's, it has estimated cost of six million dollars. This is potentially a 2019 project.
Thank you, Will, all right. Okay, so just to keep us moving, and you know, I think we need to give this crowd, this is a good crowd. All right, our Water Department Director, Weena Boozman, come on, Weena, tell us what you have going there.
My boards here on my left reflect the city's eighteen-million-dollar water distribution improvement project, which consists from the Neighborhood Water Service Line Replacement Project, Citywide Water Meter Replacement Project, erection of two water storage tanks, fire hydrant improvements, erection of a bulk water filling station, district metering improvements, to demolition of the old filtration plant. I will touch on a few of these improvements and projects today. The city has commenced its first phase of improvements, which is the lead line replacement project. Our goal is to improve water quality at the customer service taps, which existing lines are comprised of lead. The project commenced back in August of 2017, whereby a one-point-two-million-dollar contract had been awarded to replace approximately four hundred lead lines throughout the Superfund Zoned Areas Two and Three. Currently, we are working in Zone Three, and have completed approximately two hundred homes thus far out of the four hundred targeted. We ask that if you own a home within these areas, Zones Two and Three, and have not signed a consent form, to replace your lead line, to do so as soon as possible, as you have a limited time to get this work done and participate in this program. It is important to note that the work is at no charge to the property owner, because the mayor worked diligently with the state to obtain funds for this project. I have available the forms at my table, and you can see me after the presentation. And the second major improvement that I would like to highlight is our meter replacement project, which entails installing a citywide, uniform watering metering system, replacing approximately seven thousand residential, commercial, industrial-type meters throughout the city, as a majority of our meters, of our existing meters have been in service since the structures have been built, and they have reached the end of their expected service life. I have on display at my table one of the old meters, which will be replaced with a new master meter, which Ben here from Filtration is holding up, that has built-in wireless technology and specialized leak detection technology. As we transition over to the new metering system, the Water Department will have the ability to remotely secure collections of metering directly from water meters, and eliminating the need for onsite readings. We have the ability to receive timely notifications, such as leaks, tamper, and theft alerts, as well as inactive meter alerts. This will give us the ability to address these issues and notify customers timely, and overall improve our billing, customer service, and operations. I would like to take this opportunity to inform our residents and customers that we anticipate installing, installation of the new meters in the coming months, I would say sometime in July, and it will be required that we have access to customers' properties in order to change out the meters. So we need much cooperation from the residents and our customers. We will also be conducting an outreach program and to coordinate appointments for the installation of the new meters, so please look forward to upcoming information being distributed on this program. Upon the installation of your new meter, you will be able to download the My Water Advisor User Guide or app, and I have information at my table on that, that will easily guide you to create an account and start viewing your account information. With this new technology, you will have access to view and track in real time and manage your water usage twenty-four-seven, as well as set up alerts that will notify you of leaks and over-budget notifications. This is a very user-friendly app, and will assist in our efforts to conserve water resources and enhance our customer services. The estimated investment for this meter replacement project is approximately three million dollars, and again, is scheduled to commence in the very near future, with an estimated completion date of six months.
I have a question, what do you want the, about the, our library today?
Excuse me, we're taking questions at the end, sir. You came in a little tardy, but we're going to answer questions at the very end, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. To keep you apprised on these major projects and other city-related improvements, we will be including some of this information within our water bill as answers, and as well as on our website at www.eachicago.com, and you can look under the Water Department link for additional information, and I'll be available at my table if you have any questions or need additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Weena. Okay, this is our last department, and we're going to have two departments coming together. So our IT Department, who is directed by Kevin Klosick, and our multimedia department, who is directed by Steve Segura. Let's give them a hand, these will be our last two former presentations, and then we'll get to the questions.
Hello, everyone, I must tell you, this has been the funnest and most exciting Town Hall meeting we've had so far, right?
Yeah.
Anyways, my name's Steve Segura, I am in charge of ECTV. If many of you have Facebook, or have Channel Twenty-One with Comcast, all of our notices and all our information goes up on there. One other thing that we've been in charge of developing is a phone app called Three-One-One, and the phone app gives you the ability to report any issues, whether it be, you know, rubbish, an abandoned car, high grass, you name it, there's tons of options there. It can get you in contact with any office, any number, all our information is right in one place. So if you have an Apple phone, or an Android phone, it's called EC Works Three-One-One, make sure you download it today. The other thing we do is, we have a new app service, or a phone, mobile phone service called Nixle. It's real simple, if you have a cell phone and you know how to text, all you do is get your phone and text to this number, eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven, number's right there, and then in the message, all you do is type in EC Events. If you want, right after the meeting, we can all do it together, I'll be right here, I'll show you how to do it. And whenever there's like a problem, like a road closure, water main break, or any kind of emergency, or a notice of an event, or a notice about this meeting, you'll get it on that phone. And we've been pretty diligent, Sandra helps me out with, you know, getting you guys a weekly message, you know, every week about what's happening in East Chicago. So if you want to know what's happening in East Chicago, that's the best place to do it.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Klosick, once again, I'm the Director of Information Technology for the city, and before I start, I want to reflect on what are the department heads had mentioned, and just give you the recognition of coming out tonight and taking time out of your day, and taking interest in what's going on in the sixth district. I think you're to be commended for that. Tonight, I, I'm going to talk to you about two projects that have been going on through the city that are technology-related, and with that, our mayor has always believed in investing your dollars in four major areas, that being public safety, technology, infrastructure, and economic development. Both of these projects touch each of those categories in one way or another. Excuse me. The first project, I, normally I don't, I don't care to do like comparisons, but I do want to make note of some facts about this project. So I, I've touched base with some of our surrounding communities, some larger, some smaller, and trying to get an idea of their investment of security cameras in their city, and some have replied that, you know, they've had fifty cameras, sixty cameras, some maybe a hundred cameras, one even a hundred fifty. Well, I'm proud to say that, due to the commitment from our mayor and the dollar spent, we have thus far invested one-point-five million dollars in seven-hundred-and-fifty cameras throughout the city of East Chicago. These cameras are strategically placed in public buildings, parks, select intersections, and now even going into some of the neighborhoods throughout the city. And as our police chief had mentioned, this investment has paid great dividends with regards to our public safety, and our police department, and some of the work they've been able to achieve. And it will continue to grow, it will continue to grow. The second project is another infrastructure technology project that our city has been working on for quite some time, and once again, our mayor finally committed to say, "I want this done." And through those efforts, a one-point-seven-million-dollar project, we have, we are the first city in Northwest Indiana to complete seventeen miles of high-speed fiber throughout the city. This is, this has paid great dividends for the city itself with regards to communications. Those seven-hundred-and-fifty cameras that I talked about, were able to communicate citywide to each and every one of those cameras through a pair of fiber optic throughout the city. We also have spare fiber that is being made available to the public. Thirteen miles of that fiber is looped throughout our business district, basically Indianapolis Boulevard, Columbus Drive, Klein Avenue, and Chicago Avenue, and... And a company called Nitco or Northwest Indiana Telephone Company, they've been contracted to manage that fiber. And through that management, they're able to offer services as internet, high-speed fiber internet, phone services and such to the businesses throughout our community. And they've also committed to working within this project to possibly carrying out those services to the neighborhoods of the city as well. The, that fiber is also made available for, or being made available for the public Wi-Fi hotspots that were talked about earlier throughout our parks and some other public areas throughout the city. So with that, I'd just like to say that, you know, I'm proud to work with the mayor in, on behalf of these technology endeavors. And if anyone has any questions after the meeting, we'll be around to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And now we will go to our question to ask period. I just wanna set up again a couple of ground rules for the question to ask period. We have a lot of people here, so we won't, aren't gonna let anyone to dominate the time or dominate the questions and we still wanna get to our door prizes. We have some wonderful door prizes from our partners at Ameristar Casino. So I will give you a chance to ask one question. There won't be rebuttal back and forth, so you just raise your hand. I'll kinda work my way around the room as to who has a question to ask. So if you raise your hand, anybody with a question.
Again, I wanna, I wanna especially thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a question over here, and the gentleman over here, I know he had a question from earlier.
Hello, my name is Jessica Spencer. I just wanna know if we're gonna get another super big grocery store in this area?
Uh, yes, we're working on it. We've reached out to Aldi's. We presently are talking to, what's that? Mary, a store called Mary Ann's. We had talked to another grocery store called Pete's. Fiesta Market. So, so we're presently are reaching out to these stores. So keep your fingers crossed, you know, your fingers crossed.
Okay.
That's my preference. I love Aldi's.
Okay, we have a question right here.
Oh, hi. My name is Drayber, Drayber Dorn. And I'd like to know, what do you know about the cold department? The cold department passes the winter comes, so I need the, the place warm.
Okay, so you're talking about like a warming center in the winter or? Okay. Well, the question was concerning that like, when it gets cold, what does the city have available?
Well, what we do when, when it reaches a certain temperature, we open up our centers and we turn those into warming centers. So you're looking at Roberto Clemente was a warming center. You're looking at Heritage Hall was a warming center. So, so we open up the neighborhood centers and we allow that through the health department and the health department monitors the warming centers.
Okay, question back over here.
Hi, my name is Donna Brown. I was wondering, do we have a cleaners here somewhere near?
No, no. The last cleaner we had was on the Chicago Avenue side. They had been around like thirty, thirty-five years and they didn't wanna make a reinvestment. And so then he retired. So again, that's something else that we're presently looking into.
But, and again, I'll add to that, the Department of Economic Development, when we talk to people that are entrepreneurial, we do let them know that that is a void in the city. Right now, someone is leaving the city to find the dry cleaners. And what we're trying to do with the business model that we're presenting to people is saying, hey, you know, you don't have to have a full fence, you dry cleaner, but it's just a pickup, drop-off, cashier system. And then the trucks will come from some of the bigger systems. So Marina, who is Department of, I mean, Economic Development Director, we do have these conversations, trying to get that.
And there, there is a drop-off dry cleaners at 142nd and Euclid called Lolly Lad. They just opened up, they took over Helen's. So if you, if you go there, there, it's a wash, you can do your laundry and you can drop off for dry cleaning.
Okay.
Thank you, Marina. She's just recently added that service.
Right, so we'll try to help with getting that word out because we all need that from time to time. Question right here and then I'll circle back.
Hi, my name's Andrea Flores. I'd like to ask, are we gonna have a downtown?
Downtown? Well, if you look at the new development we just put down and we just exposed you to the Fitzsimmons, where the bottom is gonna be nine thousand square foot of commercial retail space. Then, when, when this is constructed in about roughly a year, then you'll see us fill the gap in between the Superior Courthouse and where we recently tore down the old Crystal Palace. You'll see us fill that spot. You're gonna see us slowly go dot to dot replenishing of the spots. What ended up happening in the city of East Chicago over years and years and years, there was not any reinvestment. So a lot of our older stock just deteriorated, so then now you see we have to build new. And, and every time we build something new, you're looking at roughly four million dollars that we have to use. And we use this to attract new development and we've been lucky so far that both units that we put up on Main and Broadway is fully occupied. We already know that when we put the Fitzsimmons up, it's gonna, the commercial part will be fully occupied. So we, we know that if we build it, they will come.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a question right here.
My name is Vicky Bogovich. I'm kinda concerned about the low voter turnout. I was wondering, where do you go to get certified to register voters? I'm the new precinct commitment for this district.
Well, you can go down to the county at the voter registration office. They can give you the materials that, that you need. And then from there, you know, you just literally have to go door to door. Or you can work here with the precinct organization, the city's precinct organization, who's the precinct chairman is Robert Gonzalez, I mean Garcia. You can probably work here locally with them.
Okay, question back here in the back.
I was gonna third guess, but Brad. Listen, he was talking about the redevelopment of, it was a project about the reconstruction of the old, the senior census homes. Are you all hiring the community for that?
Yes. In all of our projects, any project that's over a hundred thousand dollars, we have a hiring ordinance that says sixty percent of that workforce must be from the city of East Chicago. We diligently enforce that. We try to get the help through the union halls, just to get them here locally. The city of East Chicago is even hiring. We've been aggressively hiring, part-time, working together with the Indiana Plan, stepping people from part-time work into full employment. We announced earlier with Mr. Ken Sink, who's Superior Amalas, is an Amalas service that we brought in here, who's working with us to teach our children to be EMTs, paramedics, to be certified medical drivers. So we, we are working with other agencies to just connect in a holistic way, getting people employment.
Okay, thank you. Another question here.
My name is Herbert B. James. Mr. Cooper, I used to live across the street from you. We talked about a halfway house for the, for the guys that just get out of prison. Did you ever come across a conclusion to that?
Well, right now, presently, the housing director she mentioned earlier, in those areas where we're getting housing for homelessness, we're getting housing for our veterans. So it, am I looking at just saying a halfway house? No, we're looking at just saying housing per se, quality housing for, for those who don't have it. So we're not stigmatizing anyone saying, because you're a drug addict, you this. We're just saying there's a need for housing.
Okay, I think we have one more question in the back and we're gonna get the door prizes.
My name is Suzette. I just moved here in the building. I just wanna know, you just sent me the jobs. How do I go about applying for a job here in East Chicago?
It just only put on one type of job. We have various departments, but I will simply tell you, if you start at City Hall and you go through our human resources, then you can put an application in there. If you go to our website, it shows you on a daily basis all of the jobs that we have open in the city of East Chicago. And I would just simply say go from there.
Okay.
And that website is eChicago.com.
Okay, if we can get, maybe get started on our door prizes. And what we'll try to do, because it's very tight, if you, when we call your name, we could have some of the staff just walk the prizes out to everyone and just say, excuse me, because it's kinda tight getting in.
I watch, everybody's a winner now, but I don't think we got enough for everybody. But, but good luck to everybody.
That's good enough.
Good luck to everybody.
And I wanna point out again, these, all of these gifts prizes came from Ameristar Casino. Ameristar has been a great partner with the city of East Chicago.
Our first winner is, is it Maxine Barnes? Or Maxme Barnes? Is it Max Barnes? I just cut it short to Max. Y'all probably called him, said Max. No, going once. Where, oh, okay. How you feeling? Okay, next lucky winner, Jessica Spikes. Jessica Spikes? Oh, she went upstairs? Remember you said it, I did. Claudine Elias. Claudine. Claudine, okay, Claudine. Claudine, Claudine.
That wasn't right, man.
I'm sorry. Hey, man, I got bifocals now. I can't even see coming and going.
Charge the head, not the
Angela Lopez. Angela Lopez. Brenda Davis. Oh, no, no, no. This one's not working.
Okay.
Brenda Davis. Brenda, all right, there we go. She trying to tell Vanna, shake them off, Vanna. Robert Zapata. Pritchett, Pritchett, is that somebody, Pritchett? All right, it says M. Pritchett. Mrs. Will Ella Biddy, right there. Give her a choice, give her a choice. Mrs. Rose Richmond. All right, we got a winner. Hey, man, the women rule the world. What can I say?
Let me say, I told you that ain't a man's world.
Winnie West, Winnie West. Winnie West, huh?
I know.
All right, like I said, oh, she's too young. She's, she's too young, Winnie. Now, you know that was you ain't a jazz man. Like I told you, ain't the man's world, man. Andrea Flores. Yeah, I'm one of them. Who got left?
About three, three left.
Vicky Bogana?
Bogovich.
Bogovich, okay. Oh, you know what? I was looking at the name at the top. What does it say at the top? Vicky? It says B-O-G-O-N-D.
Mister man, you can't up your name, man.
But I tell you what, I'm consistent 'cause it's only women except for you. Cynthia Smith. Cynthia Smith.
Can we have one more?
Mrs. Turner. All right. I told you, man, it's, it's woman's world.
Okay, so again, we wanna thank everyone for truly coming out. Let's, let's just make it back safe. And again, we'll be at the station, so if you have any questions, this concludes this portion. All of our directors will be around for any further questions. Thank you and be blessed.
Newsletter coming to you every two months to keep you informed about everything that's happening. And you'll be getting one in the water bills as well every month, so make sure you read them. They got a lot of good information.